The Waterloo City Council, Monday, May 2nd. Meeting, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Vois.
Here, let's take a few moments for a silence. All right, with the mayor being absent and it being City Clerk Week, I'm going to ask our city clerk, Kelly Felkley, to do our pledge.
Can you start me in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment. I would like to move our other council business, number 21, to right after our consent agenda.
Second.
And then also, sorry, and then also the minutes of April 18th, 2022, regular session as proposed. Still second, thank you, Mr. Strauss, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. Seems the mayor likes to leave me with several proclamations, so.
Adrian.
Join me, please. He's so good at it.
All right, so, we're a little ahead of the game here, but the City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, National Police Week, Peace Officers Memorial Day, whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Police Week, and whereas the law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free men and women, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas it is known that all too often, police officers are killed in the line of duty nationwide, our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Ray Vois, on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Police Week, and I call upon all citizens to honor and show our sincere appreciation for the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I also call upon all of our citizens to make every effort to express their thanks to our men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day, and to return to our homes knowing we are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all those who would violate the law.
Adrian.
Thank you, really appreciate it, it's good for us to honor the officers who've lost their lives over the past years in Waterloo, we will have a ceremony on May 17th at 10:00 a.m. at Soldier and Sailor Park, the public's welcome to attend that, and it's a pretty good event, so it's being sponsored by the Iowa State Patrol this year. Thank you.
Sir, appreciate it.
All right, next we have World Migratory Bird Week, and Tom. And Candace, okay, from the Prairie Rapids Audubon Society, correct? Okay. I'll just have you stand, yeah. Camera gets you better over there, so, yeah, yeah. All right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas nature lovers around the world are celebrating World Migratory Bird Day on May 14th, 2022, which supports our moral responsibility to protect birdlife, and whereas Waterloo, having been officially recognized as Iowa's longest-standing, bird-friendly city, has taken steps and will continue to take steps to improve conditions necessary for the health and welfare of our nesting and migratory birds, and whereas Waterloo is taking measures to educate and engage people in birding and wildlife conservation, and whereas over 300 migratory and resident bird species use the various habitats in Waterloo for feeding and nesting, and whereas birds and bird-related activities have a significant economic impact, and whereas promoting abundant, sustainable bird populations in healthy habitats benefits our world's biodiversity and human society, now therefore, I, Ray Vois, on behalf of Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo of Iowa, do proclaim May 8th through the 14th as World Migratory Bird Week in Waterloo, Iowa, and urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large throughout the year. Couple of words?
Thank you for this, and we want to thank the city, and Paul Hudding, and Todd Deerfield, the forester, and for your commitment, is what it is, to making Waterloo a better place for habitat, for birds, and for wildlife, and nowadays days, for pollinators and insects, and we encourage people to put native plants and native trees in your yard, it supports birds and your pollinators, and we encourage people in the city to keep cats indoors, it's better for the cat, and certainly a lot better for the wildlife and for the birds, and I'll give, we really appreciate the parks and the efforts that they've made here, the park service in Waterloo and making improvements, and this commitment to get better a little bit every year, they try to do something to improve the application, and as we said, you're the longest-running, um, bird-friendly community in the state, now, ahead of Cedar Falls and Denver, and at Tripoli, or inner region there also now, that, but, uh, as an example, we had a bird walk at Greenbelt Lake last week, we had about 14 people there, and they put some significant money with the, um, grant that they received to improve that park, there were a bunch of people out there fishing, we're out there birding, watching wildlife, people walking, or somebody on a wheelchair out on the new, um, fishing pier that was going out there, it's handicap accessible, and I know there's gonna be some better plans coming up in the future, so we have a number of activities that we're gonna invite all of you to, anybody can come to these things, and Candace will tell us what the activities we have planned for next week, which is on our website, and I'll give you a card.
So our website is GoPraz.org, on Monday at 4:00 p.m., we will be doing a bird walk at Greenbelt Lake. Tuesday, our Audubon monthly program will be held at the First Presbyterian Church in Cedar Falls, and the program is from Humanities Iowa, and it is a oral, or like a history about Dean Darling, so please join us for that, other field trips throughout the week, and then, we're gonna wrap up our field trips, again, come back to Waterloo at Riverview, down at the Harold Getty Lake, another field trip at 4:00 p.m., and then our big birding day, all day, Saturday at Sweet Marsh, so again, Waterloo has set the bar high for being the premier bird-friendly community in the state, and we're really proud of that, so thank you for your commitment to that, and thank you for the work Mr. Deerfield has led with regard to that as well. Thanks.
All right, and then finally, we have Ed, is Ed here? Ed Odison, for Historic Preservation Month. All right, so, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, May is Historic Preservation Month, uh, sorry, whereas May is Historic Preservation Month, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, tourism promotion, and neighborhood revitalization, fostering local pride and maintaining overall community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation can benefit Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds and communities, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people, and whereas the Waterloo Historic Preservation Commission will be holding its annual celebration of those who have made a difference in Waterloo preservation over the last year on May 2nd, and whereas Waterloo currently has 25 national register listings in three historic districts, now therefore, I, Ray Vois, on behalf of Mayor Quinton Hart, hereby proclaim in the City of Waterloo, May 2022, as Historic Preservation Month.
Thank you, thank you very much, that's May 12th, that our, yes, our presentation is, we're, the public's invited to come, so, it'd be at 6 o'clock at the Vice Solomon Brothers Museum, so please come and join us, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time for public comment, and we do have one registered speaker force a non-agenda-related item, Doug Miller.
Thank you. Is it possible to hand those out?
Yeah.
To the council members? Let's see. Should be ten of them. So I'm the superintendent of the Catholic cemeteries here in town, and the maps that you're getting is an aerial view of the Mount Olivet Cemetery, 3912 West 4th Street. Historically, we have never paid the stormwater fee, and I know that that's been in effect for quite several years now, they did start billing us for that at the end of last year, and it's currently $400 a quarter. We have never been hooked up to the city sanitary sewer or the storm sewer, so we kinda handle our own water issues, and of course, as a cemetery, we do not want standing water in the cemetery, and when the ground is saturated, as it is right now, um, we don't want that to remain, we wanna be able to carry that away and take it either to a field tile or to our retention pond that we have on the property, so we've worked hard over the years, whenever we've added new areas, we make sure and we tile that out so that we don't have water problems, a side benefit of that is that that water does not go into the city system, so, I know it's kinda difficult to follow this, but, um, the storm sewers are along 4th Street, and from the sidewalk along 4th Street to the west, it has quite a slope to it, so the water actually falls towards the center of the cemetery, um, our high spot is kinda out here where the mausoleum building is, and from there, it slopes to the east, so, right here where you see these red lines, those are all tiles that we've put in, the red dots are drains, and none of those drains go into the city system, they're kept within the cemetery. This is our retention pond, you can kinda see up here our northern border, so there's a main tile that goes from the center section here up to that pond, this section right here, right above the parking lot, which this is the biggest, the largest impervious zone in the cemetery, um, a lot of water comes down that, it has a definite slope, um, towards the east, and there's a drain right here at the bottom of it, and then when we developed this new area here, five years ago, we added 400 rainy barrel pots out here, we put a main tile in as kind of a buffer, and that's also where we push our snow in the wintertime, works very well, we really never had standing water in the cemetery, um, so that kinda takes care of this north side, I've drawn kind of an imaginary east-west line here, um, so, all that water, we try and channel to this retention pond, in the south side, um, it's sloped a little differently, again, our high spot is kinda where the mausoleum is, and then the ground slopes, uh, towards the south, down here is also an impervious area, this is a blacktop road on our southern border, and from there, it slopes, uh, to the north, so this area right in here where you see all these drains is the low spot, water comes down these roads, and goes down these drains, and on the southern part of the cemetery, goes into field tile, this over here is 20 acres that's still agricultural land, and that's where we put our water, so, um, my argument isn't about the classification of the cemetery or how they measured the impervious area, it's that we're just not hooked into the city system, and with the exception of this northernmost drive, that does angle down towards 4th Street, um, that's really the only water that we're putting into the storm sewers, the rest of it is maintained within the cemetery, so, I would just ask that this be looked at, I'd like to invite all of you to come out to the cemetery, because you can really see it, if you come out there and just drive through, you can see how the land slopes, and, uh, it's really a benefit to the city the way it is designed, because that would be a lot of water going into the system if it weren't for the tiling and things that we've done there, so, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
For question, Mr. Nichols?
Yes, um, thank you for the presentation, what was your ask, then, is there an ask for that?
Well, um, ultimately, I'd like to see the groundwater fee, um, removed, or at least just based on the one small drive that we have, instead of, what they do is they calculate it on all of this impervious area, so all of this in white is our concrete roads, and also the black tops that are included there, they just look at this aerial map, and they figure that square footage, and that's how they come up with the fee, and it's based on $4.50 for every 5,000 square foot, so they've included that entire area in the calculation, and it's $391 less tax, it's $400, um, so, I know it doesn't make any difference, that we're a nonprofit that has nothing to do with whether you get charged a stormwater fee or not, but it really raised eyebrows when we went from a $30 water bill to a $450 water bill, so, you know, every dollar counts, so, yeah, I'd like to see it, um, just looked at, and, you know, if you agree that we're not contributing to the city system, I don't think that there should be a charge for it.
Mr. Miller, have you spoke to anybody?
I have, originally, uh, I called the Water Works, and I talked to Mr. Wayne Castle, he explained to me how it is figured, now, the first bill we got at the end of last year, it was just $190 tacked onto our water bill, and I sent word out to a couple of our board members here, just to inform them about it, and, uh, didn't really pursue anything at the time, and then at the end of the first quarter this year, it went up to $400, so I don't know if they prorated it that last quarter of last year, or why there was the big difference, so then I contacted, uh, I was asked to contact Waste Management, and I talked to Matthew Olssberg, and he directed me to the city clerk, and just said, if you wanna do an appeal, that's the way to do it, and we'll refer the council.
Okay, right, thank you, sir.
I sent a, an email, um, to Mr. Childs, and originally, I sent one to the mayor, but I never heard anything back from him, so.
Okay, all right, we'll look into it then, thank you.
Mayor, could I?
Yes, Mr. Bowson?
Would it be possible for, I don't mind you put Mr. Knutson on the spot, just to explain, where, how we, how and why we bill for the stormwater fee? Thank you.
Jamie Knutson, city engineer, um, we bill for the stormwater fee based on the amount of impervious area, that could be buildings, that could be concrete, that could be gravel, anything that isn't grass, basically, we are calculating that area and charging it, charging the fee based on that. Every city, or every property within the City of Waterloo pays the stormwater fee, then, there are written into the ordinance a very few exceptions, nonprofits are still required to pay, churches, hospitals, everybody that contributes water to the stormwater system is required to pay. Now, I was out there last Thursday at the cemetery, looking around when it was raining, um, Mr. Miller is correct that there are drains out there that do take some of the stormwater, and it does, I assume, go into some field tiles out there, but eventually, those field tiles empty somewhere, like little farm kid, they eventually dump out into a ditch someplace, and most likely, this dumps out along Highway 63, and then it would go past Loves, and up past Cyclone, and Titan Trail, and up that way, and up, up past Ridgeway and all of that, so it does eventually, in a roundabout, in a longer way, their stormwater does get into our system, um, the only way that stormwater does not get into our system is if you live in a bowl, and eventually, that bowl will fill up with water, I mean, it's an impossibility, everywhere, everybody contributes some stormwater to it, that's why the ordinance, when it was written in 2009 and adopted in 2009, provides very, very few exemptions to that, um, otherwise, everybody does contribute, it doesn't have to be directly out to a street or into stormwater pipe, but eventually, that water will get someplace where the city has to deal with it, whether it's through ditches, or pipes, or what have you, and eventually, we do have to deal with that water as it gets all the way up through that, through that development in Ridgway and on into Blackhawk Creek.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Mr. Mayor, present. Mr. Childs, um, any idea why this property was missed and hadn't been paying this fee?
Little bit of a history lesson for you, um, when we did initially do the stormwater fee and set that up, we paid a consultant at the time, because we did not have a GIS system to be able to go through and calculate all these individual properties for the amount of area that they would have, so we hired a consultant to do that, and they did that for us, worked with the Water Works, the Water Works does our billing for us, um, up until about three years ago, when the city invested in a GIS system, we now have the ability, and I now am back up to full staff, where we do, and Wayne does get the accounts from the Water Works, and we do go through every account as we have time, so, it was a case that, for whatever reason, when it was originally set up, it was just never, it was just missed, I can't tell you the reason for it, we are not going back, and this isn't the first case where we've had somebody be missed, um, but we do not go back and ask for back, back fees, um, we just move from this point forward, so that's, that's how we've, we've found this one, we found, as you all know, there's a lot of construction going on all over town, we do it not just for, you know, new buildings, but, or new developments, but people that are putting on building additions, adding to their parking lot, so we do try to check these, it does, just takes us a while to go through that, there's, Chad, maybe you know, but there's probably 20,000 or 30,000 accounts within the City of Waterloo, and it just takes a while to go through, so, um, it was an honest mistake, it was just missed, um, and we're trying to correct those as we have time to go through the entire city.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Okay, now's the time for anybody else that would like to come up, and, uh, please make sure that we have your name and address, please, thank you.
Latonya Graves. 607 East Donald Street, and so, I'm coming before you in regards to ordinance number 5614, in regards to mobile food vendors. Well, I've been contacted by some mobile food vendors that been for our Juneteenth event, and so last August, um, the ordinance was voted on where they would have to pay a fee to the city for $350, and they already pay the fee to Blackhawk County Health, which is $100, so when I went online and I read it, I read it to, this is my understanding of it, that they're good until their current fee expires, and so, a couple of them were shut down, and they said they never received notification from the city in regards to this new ordinance and this fee of $350, but like I said, when I read it, it sounded like that as long as they were current with their health department license, um, they're good, and they have to apply or renew 15 days before they expire, so technically, one person expires June 30th, and so, I told him, I said, well, you would have to apply for this new fee by June 15th, and then that would still, I guess, keep you current, or whatever. So how were, their question is, they were never notified of this new fee, and so my question is, how do you contact food vendors, do you reach out to the Department of Health and get the list of names from them, because that would've made more sense to me than that way these people would've been contacted, and I've known that, um, this ordinance was enacted last August, and my event is June 18th and June 19th, so it's going to affect those vendors that will be participating in Juneteenth.
All right, I'm gonna have City Clerk Felkley address that.
Sure, um, so, last August, the city put into place a mobile food business ordinance, the effective date of the ordinance was delayed until January of this year, so this will be the first year that a mobile food vendor license will be required in order to operate food trucks, et cetera, within the City of Waterloo, um, now that the weather's getting nicer, um, we have done a couple things to kinda help educate people that this license is required this year, um, we've put out a press release, an information packet is going out to all the food vendors that are licensed currently by Blackhawk County to kinda give them, um, information about what the program is, what some of the rules and regulations are, et cetera, um, we're partnering with Blackhawk County as well, um, so as they go to do their food license inspections for the applicants, um, they will also talk to applicants that reside within Waterloo to kinda help them understand that the new ordinance has gone into effect, um, and just kind of a little bit of an overview about mobile food vendor licenses, Waterloo is actually one of the only large cities within the state of Iowa that doesn't have a mobile food license, so, um, in the years past, we have had quite a few people contact our office and ask if that is a requirement, um, and part of the reason why we decided to change the ordinance was, we had a transient merchant license on the books, but that fee for the transient merchant license was $45 per day, so the switch, while it is, it is a big change, it will be more cost-effective for vendors, so, sorry about the confusion, um, but if people have questions, they're more than welcome to contact my office to kinda help through the application process.
Okay, so in essence, they'll pay the $350. Okay. So in essence, they'll pay the 350 to the city, and then they'll still pay the $100 fee to Blackhawk County?
Correct. And part of what that fee is doing, there's a separate inspection process that they have to go through with the city, that is not covered with Blackhawk County. So there's a background check. Every location where they're proposing to vend has to be checked by planning and zoning to make sure that there's adequate parking at that location. And then also, with some changes to the fire code within the last year, the fire department is doing a safety check of all the mobile food vendors, just to make sure that propane tanks are secure and everything, and the hood is safe.
Okay. So is that going to limit the number of people that can vend that event?
I don't believe it should limit the vending that could happen at an event.
Okay.
And if somebody is coming in from out of town to participate in the event, they don't necessarily have to have a food license with Waterloo. It's only for when you're vending around within the community.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
I have a question, and Kelly, maybe you'll be able to answer it. So if they've already went through with the Department of Health, and like she said, it doesn't expire until June, will they then have to go back to the Department of Health and get another one now, or in June?
So it's actually two separate licenses. One is the food safety license that the Department of Health takes care of. And then these separate license, which is the mobile food vending license with the city of Waterloo. So you need to be a licensed, you need to be licensed with the state in order to vend within Waterloo, but they're two separate licenses. So you have the option with the Waterloo license to do an annual license, which will expire one year from the time you apply and are approved. Or there's a 30-day license to kind of offer some flexibility for people that are coming in from out of town that wanted to spend for a little while in the summertime.
Last question. Is there leeway for the vendors whom haven't been contacted by Blackhawk County Health just yet on this new ordinance?
Maybe the Fire Chief wants to speak to some of that. Sorry. We have, you know, we have been going out and talking to some of the vendors, and we're, it's new, brand new this year, so we're trying to be flexible with everybody and lend more towards helping them understand, rather than going with penalties, fees, things like that.
Sure. Pat Trueller, Fire Chief. So we're taking the approach that the vendor, the mobile food truck operator, needs to make an attempt to get the application in with the city. Once they can prove that the application is in, they've begun the process, then we're not shutting anybody down.
But they are getting shut down if they hadn't, if they hadn't yet heard of the new ordinance? Are they then being shut down?
No, I'm only aware of one individual that has said, well, I'm not going to put an application in. That's what I'm aware of. There's, there was one individual that has said that he's, he's not going to move forward with it. If, if there is somebody that's under the impression that they've been shut down, I can certainly speak with them. You give me their contact information, and we can go from there.
I am Willie Campbell, 608 Candlewick Road, Waterloo, Iowa. I've been food truck business for about 20 years in Waterloo, and never had any problems. We normally get the health inspection from the health department at $250 a year. Just recently, they went up. My concern is that I was shut down at Lafayette and Levin Street just recently, and I had paid that 250 from last year to then up until June 38, 28. And so I guess my question is, do we get compensated for that time that we're shut down? Because we only get six months out of the year prior to winter. And so if I'm shut down, if the ordinance is going to affect January, then I'm five months of revenue, lost revenue. And so we, my concern was, will we be compensated for the time that we've lost? I was the one that shut down, was shut down. But I do plan to put in a license for the license. I just had a problem with my ID recently. And so that, that's a concern to me.
Mr. Campbell, I think what you're talking about is the Blackhawk County license. And so you would have to take that up at the Board of Supervisors. Because we haven't yet enacted, we just enacted our, our ordinance starting January 1st.
Okay. But why am I shut down, though?
I, I can certainly speak to you.
Yep.
Okay, sure. That was, that was my concern.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate that as well. Good. Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else on non-agenda related items?
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I have a strong concern about the resolution that you folks are working on to give the non-bargaining unit, city employees, pay increases. You're going to hire someone to do a survey and survey other towns and other things. The last time you did that, where it was done by the city, we ended up giving several people $10,000 a year pay increase. And there was another group that received $5,000 a year pay increases. This is a large burden on the taxpayers of Waterloo. You are, you made, a statement was made in there, that our city employees are the most important in Waterloo. Well, I think the taxpayers rate right in there, the same as. We are one of the highest taxed cities in the state of Iowa. We may not be the highest, but we're working our way up there. We soon will be. This is a deterrent on people building and living in Waterloo. You're also talking about paying city employees to live in the city of Waterloo. I don't know if that's for public knowledge or not, but I've heard about it. Going to offer some city employees to pay them to live in Waterloo. What kind of a message does that send to the rest of Iowa? We have to pay people to live in our town. Nobody paid me to come here. Nobody pays me to stay here, but I have to pay these other people. Every time you bring in a housing project, you come to taxpayers and you take our dollars, you give them to these people who live out of town, out of state, and you create these projects. And who pays for them? Those folks who live in Waterloo, who chose to live here. But it was a lot cheaper to live here when I moved here than it is today. And I think you need to think about the taxpayers as you think about giving away to yourselves and others. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. First off, I'd ask Major Leibol, if you will, to pass out some, maybe it'll be bathroom material. But I submitted that to the Courier, and it did not get published, this week at least. But the other thing I see, and it's kind of on the consent agenda, and it's kind of not on my concern, item on the consent agenda, six, 10, and 11, always talk about when we're going to have a bid opening, and then we're going to have a public hearing. Seems to me that's a little backwards. Why are we not having the public hearing about this bid opening, so that we can give our input before, and again, I've said this before, don't insult my intelligence, that things aren't decided behind closed doors, so that we have a chance to, to do our input before you open the bids, to decide whether we want it or don't want it. That's my thought. Thank you.
So that's not something we get to decide. That's from the state code on how we process through all of this. So the bids come first, and then the public hearing comes second. That's not something any of us decides. That was state code.
That's state code.
That's state code. Yep. All right. Anybody else on non-related agenda items? Second time, Mr. Counsel?
Mr. Manz.
Mr. Grieder.
Yes. So a couple of things. So one, the week of May 2 through May 6 is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I work alongside some incredibly great people in the Waterloo Community School District. And so I just want to extend my thanks to all of my colleagues, K through 12, public and private, for all of the hard work you do. It's been a chaotic couple of years, but you have shown up and you have helped our kids. And that is to your credit. I would also like to thank the Center for the Arts staff. Yesterday, I took my children to the dinosaur egg hunt, and they thoroughly enjoyed it. I'm currently hiding several dinosaur tattoos up and down my arm that we got there. But it was a wonderful event. It was really good to be back in that space, seeing families, having all that. So I want to thank the Center for the Arts and their staff for doing that. I had a constituent meeting at the end of April. I will be having another one. This one will be on Monday, May 23, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. This is open to anyone. I'm not checking your address before you come. We had Jamie Knutson at the last one. I haven't decided which department head I would like to come to the Thunderdome, but someone will be selected for the 23rd, and that's at 5:30, and that's at the library, seeing where the last one was. And then finally, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and the Waterloo Youth City Council is doing a lot of work around the city to raise awareness for the fact that one in 25, one in four Americans deals with mental illness. And I'm, I'm one of those one in four. I struggle with anxiety and depression that I manage with medication and counseling. And I tell you that not because I want sympathy, because, because I don't, I'm, I'm doing very well with it. But I tell you that because it is often something that we don't think about, that is often stigmatized. And I hope that throughout this month, with the work of the Youth City Council and others, that we can raise awareness for solutions instead of stigma. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grieder. Any other counsel? Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Go.
Motion to close oral comments and receive a place on file.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. And then moving on to the consent agenda. I'd like to move the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 for bills payment for April 25, in the amount of $4,124,193.10. And for May 2, 2022, in the amount of $2,92,532.73.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Grieder?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to bring item number 21 to the floor. Recommendation of denial of a refund request for the property located at 314 and 320 Johnson Street for the incorrect charges for curbside garbage services in the amount of $919.32.
Second. All right. We have a motion in a second. Saw him. There we are.
Hello, Mayor Proton, City Staff, Counsel. This is actually the second time I've been before this body. This, I think, about six weeks ago, I spoke about this very thing. I kind of went through a story about what happened to me, how this came about, and requested a little over $900 in credit of incorrect charges for garbage fees on a fourplex apartment building. After that meeting, I was contacted by city staff, saying that they were going to deny the request for a refund. I requested that in writing, and that email is likely what you have attached to the agenda from the sanitation director, Mr. Brunson. Now, I just wanted to rebut a few of the points that were made on here. Basically, the city is hanging their hat on three main points of why they're not wanting to give me my money back. The first one is that I would have likely, and if you bring, I don't know if you guys have this pulled up or not, but the first paragraph in the middle, it says, "I would have had conversations with the Water Works, what I did when I bought this property." And he would have, he would have been instructed by the Water Works of the previous owner having a private hauler. This is an assumption that's being made. I spoke with Water Works, I set up city service. A private hauler waiver was already filled out for that year. I was not made aware of any private hauler. It was already on file. So when the next year came, and I didn't fill one out because I didn't know I had to, that's when charges started being incurred. It's understandable. I understand it was probably a mistake. But if this is on one person to mention this, then I think that there's an error there in, in this process. So looking on the city's website, in fact, you don't even find anything about this private hauler waiver on sanitation's page. You have to go over to city clerk's page to even find a link to it. So it's kind of a big mystery on, on this. And like I said, I had a, this was my first fourplex. I didn't have anything larger than that. This would have been the first time that I would have encountered this issue at all. Second point that Mr. Brunson makes is that when I entered into an agreement with Wright Environmental, it's, it was, it would have been in their best interest to tell me about the private hauler waiver. There's another assumption that was made. They never told me about a private hauler waiver. In fact, I, I sent one council member the contract that I filled out with Wright Environmental. Nowhere in the fine print does it say anything about, hey, make sure that you checked with the city. They have a contract with me, and I paid the money. That's what they're concerned about, as far as I'm concerned. And that's what happened. And lastly, and this is one that I yield to the city, it says that Mr. Gann should have noticed an increase in his charges for garbage services in the beginning of 2020. In fact, I should have, and I did notice an increase in charges. But as you know, quarterly billing with the Water Works is variable. These things can change. And in fact, with the consent decree, there has been some hefty increases in sewer rates. So I, I did believe that this was probably an increase of my, my tenants' usage and the increases with the consent decree. Should I have investigated that further? In fact, I should have. But is that reason enough to deny me over $900 of money that I paid the city for services that it never had to provide? They didn't have any cans. They never had any manpower of stopping by with trucks. For a period of 20 months, they collected money accidentally, and all I'm doing is asking for money, my money, that the city was not burdened by. One, one second. I, I believe that's a very reasonable request. I don't know why this has been such a struggle to get to this point. I'm a very small business, barely made it through COVID as a landlord. And I'm all registered. I feel like I've tried to do everything right. May have made a mistake not looking over my bills like I should have, but I just respectfully request the refund of, that's listed, I believe it's 914 and some, and some change back to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Mr. Boson?
I, I'm the person that asked to have this brought to the council body for, for Downpoke. I, we had, just had a work session tonight, or this afternoon, that discussed why we have these discrepancies. Because we never had a system in place before to show us that Mr. Gann didn't have any cans. We were billing him for four cans, but he didn't have any. And now we, we have the system in place. You know, I, I feel it's that we shouldn't be billing him since he went that many months without garbage pickup, without cans, to provide for his tenants. And during that time, he was also paying for a private hauler to haul that garbage away. So that's, that's my, my thought on it. I, I'm going to not support the denial personally. Because I, I think, if you look at any given time, if we overcharge people for, because they've got the wrong size carts, we're constantly refunding money to people. You'll see that a lot on, on our finance agenda. But what you don't see is that we're charging people, we're not charging people when we're, we're billing them for a, a small cart, but they've had a big cart for, as we've talked about in our work session, for 17 months. So I, I think that Mr. Gann is a, is a, is a good landlord. I, I believe that, that he was operated in good faith. And I can't support the denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boson. Any other counselors?
Mr. Mayor Proton?
Mr. Amos?
Looking at this email, I understand the mindset of what the city is saying from a standpoint of from a standpoint of that, yeah, people should have known, but in my mind, there were a lot of things that were actually overlooked. This gentleman paid for a service that he did not receive. For me, that is something that, there's, I guess, um, fault on both sides here. But for me, he, he, he's being charged for something, a service that he did not receive from the city. So I myself am personally going to agree with Councilman Bozen. I cannot support the denial of this.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Greider?
Just so I can be clear for myself, City Clerk Felkley, a yes would be to approve the denial of the refund, and a no vote would be to deny the denial.
Yep, that's correct. You vote yes, you are voting to deny.
Just want to make sure.
Okay. Many further?
I have a question, I have two questions for staff. Uh, question one is, what happens in our decision here? If we, if we decide to vote no, so deny the denial, what happens?
I think if we, then the city pays for it, right?
The city just pays for it, straight up.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're out the 919, nine-
$19.19 and whatever. Marty, would you like to say your opinion of this particular situation?
Martin Peterson, Legal Department. This is a disputed claim. Uh, city department has denied the claim, and that occurs on a somewhat frequent basis in the city, that department heads make determinations with regard to claims. They're denied, and then typically, um, the claim can be disputed through a number of venues, one of which is litigation. Oftentimes, there's insurance coverage to cover, uh, those types of disputed claims, and so that process kicks in. I don't think this would be, uh, that, that would not be applicable to this, but, uh, that's how I view this. It's a disputed claim that a department has denied.
Thank you. And I guess that's where my concern comes from, is are we, are we overreaching here? Where a department head has made a decision, is, is it, are, what does the rest of the council think here?
I just want to jump in really quick, ha- having, having chaired the Finance Committee and then having it pulled off. I think, I don't want to set, I don't want to set a precedent by having that happen again. I think having the, the council, any council person bring it to the, the Finance Committee and have that discussion in the future at the Finance Committee rather than full council, I think is, is, that's going to be my stance on it, because I think procedurally and legally, I think that's the route that we should, we should take. So in the future, this won't, as long as I'm here and Chair of the Finance Committee, this won't happen. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to work through the process, and then if we have, because we've had these concerns before with people bringing them up, and they, if they choose to litigate it, that's their choice. But I don't want to put the city, and I don't want to, you know, we, we have the department heads for a reason, a- and so I want to go through that process. This, I felt was a little bit different. Having had conversations with people, I think it should have just been held through the Finance Committee, the conversation there. So then, if it was denied through the Finance Committee, then any of our citizens could then have the opportunity to litigate it if they so choose.
Mr. Amos?
I guess one of my questions is, 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 so like, I, I made my position perfectly clear on this, but I also, I guess this is one for Attorney Peterson also, is, is by reversing the decision of the department head, are we doing anything illegal? Or do we, as a counsel, have the ability to do that?
Mr. Peterson, there.
Martin Peterson, Legal Department. Um, various of our ordinances provide for hearings before the city council. I can think of the after-hours ordinance, I believe. Um, there are procedural, um, mechanisms built in this, a few of our ordinances. I, I'm not going to be able to recall all of them. And so, my personal opinion is that this is the equivalent of that, the council conducting a hearing on a disputed claim. I don't find there to be any authority in our ordinances for a disputed garbage bill to be ripe for a, a city council hearing on the issue. And so, but I also, um, I can't sit here and say it's illegal if you do this. I, I, I don't, uh, I don't know that I can point to any clear-cut authority. So that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem?
Ms. Wilder?
Um, I have a question, and this might be for Randy. With the RFID that we, the tagging that we have on the cans now, this incident probably wouldn't happen now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Bozen?
Someone else, because I've already-
Mr. Nichols, I think, is the only one who has one, so, okay. Mr. Bozen?
So, let me, I just want to get this clarified. So, anything that's on this finance agenda cannot be moved to the, what you want to do now is not move it to the, to the, to the full council?
It's on the consent agenda, so I think we can, like, we have in the past, things have been brought up at the Finance Committee. We can have that discussion at the Finance Committee, and if something, you, you, we have three members of that, and, and those that aren't members can still sit and have that conversation. I'd rather, I'd rather have that conversation at the Finance Committee rather than full council.
But we, but had we had that conversation at the, at the Finance Meeting, it's still a three-person, but-
Yep.
It's not up to the council, except for the Finance Committee.
Yep.
So, so, correct, correct me if you're wrong, maybe I'm not understanding, but we've pulled things off the, off the finance agenda in the past and brought it to full council.
I don't recall-
We pulled bill payments off.
Bills payment, okay.
Yeah.
Bills payment and, yeah, because they're on both.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
I think we can have that discussion, because there is a mechanism for our citizens if there's a denial at the Finance Committee, or if they disagree to, to do those things. And I think what Mr. Peterson was saying about what, what we have in our ordinances procedurally, I think we need to follow those.
So-
And I don't know, I, I don't believe that I followed them as I should have.
Okay, so if, if, on, on any particular claim that comes before the Finance Committee, we're, we're willing to, as opposed to discussing it as a council and making a, a, a full, a, a decision by the full council, we're, we're saying, let's go to litigation if the Finance Committee says no, and then we pay to litigate.
I, I think if, if there's a citizen like Mr. Gann or anybody that has anything, I think, like, a, a denial of anything, they can contact us. As finance, we could be contacted, and we could have that conversation with the department head and with Mr. Peterson to see which route would be best.
All right. Okay? Okay? All right, they, he already, it's on there. His route is denial. So-
Yep.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Nichols?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
No.
Mr. Foyce?
No.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Okay, uh, I made a mistake on, um, the appointments, and we have a, uh, we have, is Jeremy Even, uh, from Operator and the Waste Management Services Department, they see here this evening? Okay? And then we have some appointments. Uh, Alan Green to Culture and Arts, he's a new appointment. Uh, Susan Price to the Historic Preservation Commission. Andrew, that's a reappointment. Andrew Tink for the Plumbing Board and Licensing Examiners and Appeals. Uh, Robert Welch for Civil Service Commission, and that's a new appointment. And Ellen Vanderloo, uh, Leisure, Leisure Services Commission, and that's a new appointment. Do we have any of those people here? Ellen, right? Hi, Ellen, welcome and thank you. Oh, sorry. Who we have all, who else do we have? Alan, nice to meet you, Alan. Thank you for serving. Okay, public hearing number two, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Uh, I would like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the fiscal year 2022 Asphalt Overlay Program Contract Number 1056.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anybody to speak on the asphalt overlay program? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Sec, oh, second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, we, motion, uh, the hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All right, Ms. Felkley.
All right, we have one bidder. It was Aspro Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, the provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $3,234,420.62.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $3,234,420.62, approving a contract, bond, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2022 Asphalt Overlay Program Contract Number 1056, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. All right, counsel, any questions on the asphalt overlay?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Bozen?
Was there an engineer's estimate on this?
I don't have one listed.
I didn't see one on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Nichols? I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for fiscal year 2022 Sidewalk Inspection and Repair Program, Zone 2. Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, uh, anybody that would like to speak on the sidewalk repairs? If there are anybody here that would like to speak about sidewalks, we have Mike Anumi right here in the front row that could hold you out if you wanted to have a discussion, so. Mr. Mayor Protem? Yes, sir. I'd like to make the motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments. Second. We have a motion, uh, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem? Yes, sir. I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing proposed repairs to sidewalk. Second. We have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Yes, sir. I'd like to make a, uh, make a motion adopting a resolution for the proposed resolution of necessity as proposed or amended. Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, that is adopted. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing in as for the purchase of one John Deere 6120M tractor with 22-foot Cradle Mountain mower.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, do we have anybody that wants to talk about buying a tractor? About this evening? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What you got for us?
All right, we have two bidders. First one is P&amp;K Midwest of Waterloo, Iowa. Their bid amount was $179,362. Our second and final bidder was trade value on a John Deere 2955, and that was $15,335. I think I read that wrong. Looks like we only have one bidder. Sorry. And they provided, P&amp;K Midwest gave a trade-in value, or a brand-new value. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution of awarding bid to P&amp;K Midwest of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $179,362.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Counsel, questions on the tractor? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Vois?
Yes. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Greider?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the sale and conveyance of city property located northwest of 326 West 14th Street to Three Stooges LLC in the amount of $1, and approval of a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $250,000 for the development of a 6,000-square-foot building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody would like to speak about property? Nope, okay, going a second time.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located northwest of 326 West 14th Street in the amount of $1 to Three Stooges LLC, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
And Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement and a minimum assessment agreement with Three Stooges LLC in the amount of $250,000 in conjunction with the development of a 6,000-square-foot building, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Bosin?
The issue I have with this development agreement is the fact that the developer does not have to begin construction for 18 months. They, they have to take permits out by November of 2023. And I think that is a, a long time. And I'm not in favor of development agreements that we don't, we don't even anticipate this type of construction for 18 months. What this does is locks this property up for 18 months in case there's someone else that's looking at that property to develop at a, and, and put something different on there at a, at a more reasonable timeframe. Now, when I, I'm sorry, sir.
Don't, don't.
So, when I contacted Mr. Anderson about this, I was, I was told that it was because when we took the properties down, we didn't properly tamp the soil, and the developer wants to wait until the, till the soil is properly settled. And we take a lot of houses down, a lot of buildings down. And I, I went by there. I don't see settling. I don't, I don't understand the 18-month timeframe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nichols, did you have a question? Nope, okay. Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
No.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Okay. All right, number six.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and as the reallocation of unspent proceeds, 2019A general obligation bonds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing is open for 2019 general obligation bonds.
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. This actually pertains to public number six, seven, and fourteen and fifteen. I've asked this question before. Why were these funds not spent on the project they were borrowed for? And how much do we actually have? Because on fourteen and fifteen, we're gonna bond some more money. How much money does this city owe? Nobody ever gets back to me, even privately. I'd like to see it publicly stated. But we keep finding money. We keep spending money. We keep borrowing money. We can't, this is unsustainable, in my opinion, and that's why I see a lot of people, or, excuse me, a lot of houses for sale, again, this year, in my area. Somebody's gotta give me an answer, please. Thank you.
Michelle, please. I think you, I think this question got brought up just a couple of weeks or a month ago, and you provided an answer, so. Yep, yep.
Michelle Weener, Chief Financial Officer, so, I did think that I responded about our total debt outstanding when this came up a couple of meetings ago. As of June of '21, I believe our outstanding bonded indebtedness was about $103 million. Since that time, we have, as you all know, we borrowed another $14,750,000 for a grant to a large project locally. So, that would raise our general obligation debt to about $117 million today. Now, June 1st, we have our annual principal payment due, and I am not sure I know the total amount, but I think we will pay that down by about 10.9 million at, as of the 1st of June. And then, items 14 and 15 are to sell another 10 million. So, we were on a plan where we're trying to stay approximately level, at least with our debt. The economic development grant that we made in January was kind of an unusual, outside the normal course of business thing, so that is going to add to our debt, and we will pay that back using primarily tax increment from that district, and also increased total motel revenues that we expect from that project. So, that, that is how that's planned to be financed. Then, to go back to the item that we're currently talking about, which is the hearing under item number six and number seven. There's a lot of rules with bond money. One of the things that we are to do with the exempt proceeds is we're supposed to use 85% of a bond issued within three years of its sale. We have a few projects that were in the bonds sold in June of 2019 that, for various reasons, they're just not occurring as quickly as we anticipated they would. I think you're all aware, for example, of the parking lots at the Center for the Arts. We've just run into some issues that have slowed down that construction. So, in an effort to, for me to try to comply with the exemption rules for the bonds and spend down 85%, I figured out that there was another project that we were planning to use more recent bonds for, which is Schallus Road Construction. And we can pay some bills with that, that will pay down our 2019 bonds, and we're just, then item number six, I'm kind of flip-flopping, and we will use the bonds sold in 2020, or, I'm sorry, number seven, we will use the bonds that were sold in 2020 to finish the Center for the Arts parking lot. And it's just a lot of math and a lot of hoops to jump through. We're gonna end up at the same place at the end of the day. I'm just trying to make sure that we comply as much as possible with all the state laws and the Internal Revenue Service rules around tax exempt bonds. So.
Michelle, just before you leave?
Yeah.
We heard a lot of this, like, just two weeks, was it two weeks ago we had a work session?
It might have been.
Or a month?
It might have been a month ago when we received our 2021 audit. That question came up then, and we had the audit in front of us, so I was able to share the June of '21 debt balances at that time.
So, so we have, nothing is hidden? We're, we're not trying to do anything?
We, we certainly aren't trying to do anything without informing the public and being transparent, and I believe our audit is available on the finance website, so webpage of the city website, I should say. So, if you ever want to look at that, you can. And it has great, it has 10-year histories in the statistics section showing our outstanding debt and lots of other interesting things if you spend the time to read it.
No, that's, I was just pulling it up. I did, was listening to, but I was pulling it up. It looks like our annual finance report goes back to June 30th of 2010. So, we have 12 years' worth of financial data that, that are, that we can talk about, along with all of the budget presentations, Citizens' Financial Guide, and, and everything else for those that are on our website often. So, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay? The passes, sorry.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, council? Hearing none? All, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, number seven, please.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Nichols.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the reallocation of unspent proceeds for 2020A general obligation bonds.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Any discussion on number seven? All right, hearing done?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, questions? All right, hearing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Vois?
Yes.
Mr. Bosin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Charles?
Yes. All right, will somebody take resolutions eight and nine, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Greider?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving an encroachment easement agreement for a property located at 513 Ivanhoe Road, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. The second is to adopt a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in Section 11-1-13 variances relating to the approval of the preliminary plat of the Paradise Estates addition. Subject to the condition of any final plat or final plats for any portion of the approved preliminary plat of Paradise Estates addition, submit for approval on or prior to May 14th, 2024, shall be subject to any new zoning restrictions or subdivision regulations adopted by the city of Waterloo prior to submission of any such final plat for any portion of said area.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we have a speaker for item number nine, Michael Henning? Okay. Nope, you first. You called in, you get first dibs.
Michael Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive, Waterloo, Iowa. I'm here to talk to item number nine.
Yes, sir.
In particular. And while you're getting that passed out, we're just gonna look at the first two pages. I want to point out that the resolution that was just read by Mr. Greider, and the communication to council do not match the request that is submitted for variance. And you can see some of the notes on that. It refers to different code sections. The stuff in, in his document refers to, to the 1978 ordinances, not the current ordinances that's in there. Also, it talks about the written document from the requestor, just for a one-year extension to 2023. You see that in about the first couple of paragraphs, and in the last paragraph, so it doesn't match. So, I'll just point that out. But I'm really here to talk about this. Back, this is a preliminary plat that was done in 2017, started then, that was until May of, of 2018, before it was adopted. Mr. Amos was the only, only person on council that went through that year plus of, that was discussed then. A Orange neighborhood was opposed to the, the preliminary plat that was adopted then for many reasons. Some of those I sent to you in an email, and we're even more so in that direction now, five years later, if you will, or four years, however you wanna look at it, because there's been a lot of changes related to the development itself and related to the neighborhood. You know, one thing we have now is a whole big water park, and this, there's a critical intersection between Schallus and Kimball, and that gets a lot of traffic. Just two weeks after the last extension was granted in 2020, there was a rollover accident right at that intersection with people injured just two weeks after that. So, that is a critical intersection, hasn't changed, and traffic has not gone down. The water is, is just gonna drive additional traffic. So, what we're requesting is to go back. We need to have a new plat. That's page one. Okay, we're requesting that. We want to have some green space in there. I think that was a, a topic with your Edison addition here recently is, you know, what are we gonna do so that people have space? There is nothing built into this preliminary plat. There's nothing that's been done related to the safety study, related to the intersections, the traffic counts, and all that stuff that was requested by the 2018 City Council. That was supposed to be a big study, it's never been done. I talked to him, that's still in, in waiting to do. We presented a, a formal study that was done on sightlines from the preliminary plat entrance to the, to the, onto Kimball, and six inches of grass or snow along the road, you do not meet the sightline requirements between the, the addition entrance and Orange Elementary School. That was presented in 2018 formal study, and that helped drive the, so, water pressure out there is an issue. I see on the webpage for the meeting that there's two residents, two families out there that have sent you some of the issues, and, and that's posted on your website. Let's see. So, green space is a deal. We have the, the trails now, since then, have been completed across from 63 over to the water park area. If we tried to get that put into the preliminary plat, some sort of connection, so our kids, we fit in 209 houses, and, and the kids wanna bike over to the water park, how do you get there? Oh, you ride, the only entrance is on Kimball Road, so you took your bicycles on Kimball, and that's just more safety stuff that's came up since that point in time. Also, if you just look at the plat from a, from the business perspective, if you look on the back of page one, ownership has changed. As a neighborhood association, we have no idea who owns that ground now. It's not Hope Anderson. We know that for sure. It's Paradise Acres. Nothing on the Secretary of State's website. There's the name Brad, and you can look at the additional pages, you'll see it. There's no name. There's an address, but no name. If you look at the zoning request that is submitted, it's signed by Hope Anderson, who we worked with in 2018. That's about the last time, and that is the last time the neighborhood has served anything for Hope and his development, but he has signed this document as manager. He's not the owner. In fact, you look at the second paragraph, he's the, he's the previous owner, it's the previous owner. My time's up. I thank you for your time. I hope that, that you vote to, to stop this extension and give us a new plat that's current, that has been worked with, and meets all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurney. I'm gonna let other public come up, and if we have any questions, we'll, we'll pull you back up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna let other public speak, and then if we have questions that we need you back up, we'll pull you back up, okay? You're welcome. Absolutely.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eric Johnson, here on behalf of Hope Anderson, with the Beecher Law Firm here in Waterloo, live at Crab Apple Lane in Waterloo. With regard to a couple of the items that Mr. Henning's has brought up, Hope Anderson is the sole owner of Paradise Acres LLC. There's no conspiracy or fraud there. He simply put an LLC because it made sense for development purposes, not to have it just in his name, but he is the sole owner, sole manager, sole member, all of the above, of Paradise Acres LLC. I represented Mr. Anderson when we came to council back in 2018, and that was quite an ordeal, when he was originally approached to sell this land to the school. One of the things that we talked about at that very initial meetings with the school and with the city was that could we develop housing out there, and did that make sense for the city? A lot of cities use schools as magnets to help develop housing because they want housing out there. There was some resistance from the neighborhood. housing because they want housing out there. There was some resistance from the neighborhood. That preliminary plat was approved. And some of the things that are asked for here are things that still need to be submitted and approved with the final plat. Now, this isn't a request for the final plat. That final plat, to move forward, will have to contain a lot more information than preliminary plat. Preliminary plat is that basic plan that we need to fill in. Some of the complaints that there hasn't been communication with the neighborhood, I got to tell you, not much has happened. So there's not much to communicate. I wish I wish there was more to communicate. The last time you extended this two years ago was May of 2020, right? May of 2020. Well, not much happened for about a full year after that, and that second year, things started moving up. One thing that has happened is Mr. Anderson currently has this real estate under contract with a developer builder who has recently had a meeting with the city and wants to move forward with this project. We know that housing is essential for our community schools. We know housing is essential to the city. Your 2030 plan, of those eight items, I think two or three of them deal specifically with we need housing in this community. Has this moved at the speed that I'm sure you as council have liked? I'm sure it has not. It has not moved at the speed that we've liked either, but it is still moving forward. One of the reasons the the rule that preliminary plat can't hang out there forever is because you don't want to approve a preliminary plat and then 10 years later approve a final plat, and the laws have changed and the ordinances have changed. There's not been any changes in the ordinance, and they've written in just as a condition that in the fact, if there are any changes between now and any extension period, that he would have to comply with that. So he's not going to be grandfathered if you change change your rules, change your ordinance. He's not going to be grandfathered. He's not looking to take advantage of the city. He's not looking to take advantage of the neighbors. Obviously, there are concerns that need to be addressed. That was brought up initially in 2018, and that those will be addressed in the final plat, assuming it moves forward. The only thing that would happen if we would require another preliminary plat would be additional cost and expense for this new developer on top of what has already been done, which makes a project that's got some challenges even more challenging. And I just don't think that's I don't think that's in anybody's best interest. Like I said, we're not trying to take advantage of the neighbors. Certainly, we wish it would move faster, but we think that the request, as recommended by staff, should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? He's already had his chance, so.
Good evening. Monique Walters, 5404 Kimball Avenue. I guess I just really want to reiterate some of the points that Mike made. My family farms both sides of Kimball Avenue in that area. Pretty much a century farm, although I don't have the exact year, but it's pretty close, if not surpassed. So we've been there a long time. We know that the school was built. We know the intention is to have housing development around that. I think, you know, we're kind of a done deal on that piece of the equation. The part that's not a done deal is that we want it done right. And it was said before, the online, the site study has not been done. Traffic study has not been done. I don't really know what the holdup on that piece of the equation is, because those seem to be items that need to be done first before anything else can be decided. The other part that Mike did a few years ago is he took the preliminary plat, and a lot of the roads in that plat are very narrow. The boulevard is very narrow. Only one car can get down each side. You have a delivery truck. Where are they going to park? And where is the traffic going to go for that neighborhood? So some of those pieces don't make sense. And maybe some of that, I'm not a developer, I'm not, I don't know, maybe some of that will be taken care of in the process. But those are important. The safety and the traffic are important for me and personal reasons. That Shawless and Kimball intersection is dangerous. My aunt died at that intersection. It is dangerous. It was dangerous when it was built, and it's still dangerous. To Mike's point that two weeks after one of the meetings, there was another accident. I don't quite understand why we can't get that piece addressed, but this development and housing is always only going to add to that. I don't want to see a traffic light, but I guess if that's what it takes, that's what we need to have. I'd prefer to see a roundabout, but then that takes more farmland to accomplish that. So for me, safety and the sightline line of sight study need to be front and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Hi. Barbara Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive. One thing that really concerns me is why the waited till the very last second to ask the extension, because at the meeting two years ago, Mayor Hart expressly asked Buzz to have his developers or who he wanted to contact the neighborhood, and that was never done. Right now, we know nothing's going to be done because the farm has already been farmed. So the obviously, the lease will not be vacated till next March 1st, probably. The other thing, I don't think anyone ever paid any attention to the Highway 21. We live right, we are the new, the Neighborhood Association contacted the city, and they got this whole debacle. How no one got hurt at the school was beyond me because for four years, people lined up on both sides of Kimball Avenue, and they did not go. There was cars parked on both sides, and traffic would go in between because those parents were waiting for the kids to be picked up. We've all heard about the mess at, is it Bess Aldrich School in Cedar Falls? All the traffic now lines up our community, whatever, they all line up on our street, on Side Hill Drive, and that whole original plat is junk because it has no connection with the school. And the reason they brought this up is that the school is going to have housing, and that was because it would build community. But if all of that traffic for that school is put on Kimball, and all those people come out of that development, as that plat shows, it is going to be a disaster. The school needs to, the developer needs to work with the community and with the school and come up with a safe, workable system. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Dr. 3145 West Fourth Street. Listening to this, it just, common sense doesn't make any sense to me. It said that there would be added cost for the developer, but I don't think the city will approve any of this until they get a final plat. So the guy's going to have to do it anyway. The cost is going to be there, whether the cost is now or in 2024. You're just hanging this out to dry for too long a period of time. Like I said, I have no skin in the game. It just doesn't make sense to me that you guys are going to continue to push this on and push this on, and maybe you won't be in office then. You know, somebody else has to decide it. I don't understand your thinking. Put this down now. Get the guy to step up to the plate and do his due diligence, so you have something that the that Noel's office can approve. Because if you don't have a final plat, you're not going to approve it until he gets final plat. The expense is there anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further conversation from public?
All right. Corey Hodapp with CJ's and the developer slash soon to be owner of this property. And I'd like to talk about a few things that we got into works. So we do have a contract with Buzz Anderson, and he will be turning this property over to me, which we'll be developing and working with staff and the city to go through this whole process. So this has been hanging out there for quite a while. We understand that. I can address most of these issues. Some of them we still need to work through. A lot of these issues come with money, with development. It takes money to handle some of the issues that they're having. As far as traffic studies, all that, that will be done. I will do that. As far as the water issues and other things like that, there has to be something done with that, which we're working together with staff, and we'll be handling that situation. There are a lot of these things that come up in the process, and we're at the preliminary stages. Buzz Anderson wanted one thing. He wanted this subdivision to be perfect. He wanted it to be nice, beautiful, and appeasing to everybody. And that was his number one goal. I tend to do the same thing that he wants. I want to make this nice. So with that being said, I think most of these issues that Orange County, whatever, I can't think of the name of it. Okay, so Orange Neighborhood Association, that's what I was trying to think of. Sorry, I ran into a blind. But I'd be happy to meet with you guys, talk about the situations. I know that north of here, the intersection is very busy. South of here...
Thank you. Thank you. No, your time right now.
Okay, sorry about that. So anyway, so Buzz is still in control of the property, but I tend to take it over and and working with everybody through this process. The preliminary plat is not going to change from what you have seen. So we're going to keep the same plat and move forward from there. We want to move as quick as we can to get to the construction plans, which is coming up right behind this meeting. So we'll be doing our due diligence, try to get everything answered, and get all the stuff in 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 movement to get this thing done. So we and we will be working with the school to handle the connection and the activities that will be needed for the subdivision. So thank you for your time.
Could you, just really quickly, because you, I didn't quite catch it, your name and address?
Oh, the address. Okay, so my name is Corey Hodapp, H O D A P P. Address of the office is 2915 Dubuque Street, Northeast Iowa City, Iowa, 5224, 52240. Excuse me.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any any further public comment? Okay, going a second time, council?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
We're going to hit everybody. Mr. Greider first.
So this is my ward, and I've had lots of conversations with the folks at the Orange Neighborhood Association. You all know I am a big proponent of more housing, especially affordable housing. So so it can't be thrown at me that I don't approve development. What I don't approve of is folks who live in the area not being brought along. And that is what I have consistently heard from the people that I trust in that neighborhood. Now, maybe that will change, and I certainly hope that it does. But it has not happened the the last three times that this has come forward. These folks are asking for their safety, their well-being, and the well-being of children to be taken care of. I understand that that things are changing hands. I understand that that we are looking towards a new day. But I have to tell you that in talking to this neighborhood and these folks, they are deeply frustrated. They are not anti-development. They are anti-development that does not bring them along as a community. And this is a community. People in Orange chose to live in Orange for a variety of reasons, and many of them understand that those reasons are changing, but they still need to be brought along, and that has not happened. And we are now going on four years, as Mr. Henning said. Jerome and the mayor were the only folks who were here for this original agreement. This is a new council from that original agreement. We were told in 2020 that action would be taken. And I understand that that stuff happened. We were dealing with a global pandemic. But even if nothing was happening, a status quo phone call to the folks or an email is not out of the question. So I will be voting no on extending this preliminary plat. I hope that it comes forward, that we can have these conversations with the school and the Orange Neighborhood Association and the full city. But right now, I think we need to come back at it tabula rasa and do it right. Thank you.
Ms. Father.
I have a question to you both, and you you might have already answered it. Have you been in coordination with the Neighborhood Association since 2018? Has anyone with the development or ownership of the property been in communication with them?
Could you, sorry, could you just come to the mic? Thank you. I apologize. That's okay.
I didn't even know it existed, so I wasn't aware of it. Had I known, I would have reached out to him. I'm very open. I'll talk to anybody about anything that we have coming forward. So I guess that's my fault for not getting more involved in the the community, but I didn't realize that no one reached out to him. So me being the developer, I will reach out to him and we'll have discussions about it. But like I stated before, I plan on doing everything I can to resurrect the issues that they're having. So.
Thank you. Mr. Amos.
Mr. Mayor Protem, like everyone is saying, myself and the mayor, we were involved with this basically from day one. And Mr. Henning, I remember that this room was packed with folks from the Orange Township. And there was discussion about all the issues that you were bringing up now. And if I remember correctly, there was discussion with the developer at that time as far as your issues were addressed, were going to be addressed. This is a preliminary plat. And I understand you're saying that they were never addressed. But this is preliminary. This is this is just the beginning of things, even though it's taken a while through many different reasons. But for me, it was agreed to. They told you that your issues would be addressed. I'm hearing a developer say that the issues, your concerns will be addressed. I've heard you say that you're not opposed to a development or anything else. So from a standpoint of, okay, yes, it's years later. But I also know that from a standpoint of me as a council person, that's what we look at. We want development. We want to increase our tax base. This is a way of doing it. And all of your issues, from what I'm hearing, they will be addressed. So for me, I am going to support the extension because I firmly believe that everything that you are wanting and needing to have happen, this gentleman here wants those things to happen. So for me, that is my view on it. Like I said, for years, this has been going on. I've been here from day one. I know that it was, everyone had calmed down from a standpoint of saying, okay, they're going to address our concerns, move forward. That was what my understanding was at the time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Amos. Mr. Boson.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Right now?
No, it's council's turn right now. Thank you.
So I was on the opposing side in 2020. It was a vote for four to three to to extend this. I said in 2020, we'd be back here in two years. And here we are for the exact same thing. Mr. Anderson's attorney spoke on the spoke through on the phone or to this council and said basically that these items would be addressed. We've got a new council. Have any of you on this council seen the preliminary plat? No, because what's in our council packet is a proposed preliminary plat. There's no streets. There's no access in and out. We don't have that information. You know, a week ago last Wednesday, this thing was supposed to be set forth on our agenda. It comes the Wednesday before. I don't know when it came to you, but for it to put on the agenda. But it's normally the Wednesday before the Monday. And then yesterday afternoon, at 12:38, we get this email from Mr. Anderson urging us to to pass this with a number of reasons, which had had he sent this out any time in the last 12 days, it would have given us ample time to address some of these concerns, which which we didn't. But if you look at item number five on this email, and it talks about the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat is instrument to lay out the property lines, show existing streets, boundaries, easements, utilities, existing and proposed for the expansion, proposed streets and right of ways, including building setbacks, lines, parks, playgrounds, et cetera. Nobody on this council has, unless Jerome remembers from four years ago, has seen this preliminary plat. And that bothers me. It really does. This has been going on for four years. And I don't think the needs of the of the Neighborhood Association and and the property owners out there have been addressed throughout this four-year timeframe. So I'm, I understand it's going to be sold. Mr. Anderson, Mr. Anderson has had two years since we were here before this council to get that traffic study done. He chose not to. You know, I have a number of issues issues with this, and it's not this new developer's fault. It falls back on nothing happening for the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boson. Mr. Nichols?
Yes. Noel, could you kind of lay out the difference between the preliminary plat and the final plat? Because I was led to believe that the preliminary plat is the most detailed plat.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So the preliminary plat is defined by the subdivision ordinance, which which, just for answering a question earlier, there's a section that refers 11131 or something. That's the code of ordinances. The 1978 ordinances, the subdivision ordinance, it's the same document, just in two different places. So the subdivision ordinance in the preliminary plat, so the preliminary plat will lay out the width of streets, the design of streets. It's a very detailed instrument that is looked at by all the city staff for the radius of street curvature, the location of streets. There was a site visibility study done. The full traffic impact study was not done because that was to be done between the preliminary and the final plat, and we're not to the final plat yet. But the preliminary plat will lay out the lot sizes. Again, there are minimum lot sizes in the zoning ordinance, in the subdivision ordinance that require what lot sizes they put in there. So all that's been reviewed. The preliminary plat was actually approved by council, the previous council, to meet all the codes and regulations of the subdivision ordinance by city staff and by the council eventually. So the final plat then moves ahead with, the final plat will basically lay out those final lot dimensions. Unless there's a reason to change something, usually minor, it'll stay the same as the preliminary plat. Obviously, if there's, there will be a deed of dedication, which is a more detailed instrument that'll talk about the building and the turning over of the streets, but it'll also talk about any kind of private restrictions that they would want to put on there in terms of building designs, home designs, home square footages, and all that.
Thank you. So in understanding that the preliminary plat is the more detailed portion, I think it would be appropriate to have the new developer and the new owner be able to be more completely engaged with the neighborhoods and the neighbors throughout the entire process. I'm very big proponent of housing and homeownership. I know that the Neighborhood Association wants how is in approval of how having housing development out there. But I think it's, I guess, a support of this council to make sure that our neighborhoods are involved in the things that are going on around where they live. So I will be voting no on this extension, and I hope that the owner will be true to his word in working with the neighborhood going forward, and will get done what he wants to get done.
Mr. Chalice?
I didn't even say anything. You called on me.
Well, you're the only one to be said to me that hasn't spoken. I wanted to give you a chance.
Well, I appreciate that. I think I share the same concerns as Mr. Nichols, Mr. Boson. But I do have a question for Mr. Anderson as well regarding the preliminary plat and comparison to the final plat. So I had the chance to speak with Mr. Henning. I received several emails, and it seems like the opposition is of the plat itself, is of what was decided, the lack of green space, which is not in our ordinance. That's correct. But that's what they were opposed. To me, the situation reflects Edison. And I just, I want to understand, is that the situation that we're seeing here?
If there's a Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, if there's a concern on lack of green space, that would have been reviewed by the technical review committee. And I want to speak for Paul, but I believe Leisure Services had reviewed that, determined that since Orange School had a playground area that was open to the public, and we do have Lipti Park two blocks to the west, that no additional park space was was needed. And of course, the lots out there are of similar designs and widths that you see in a lot of portions of the city, especially newer subdivisions that amount to green space within each yard as well.
Okay. So if we were to deny this, you can stay up there, Mr. Anderson, is it theoretically possible that this exact same plat could be resubmitted to planning and zoning, go through the exact same process, and come before this council in the exact same way that it is now?
Yes, it was approved by council prior, so it obviously meets all the regulations of the subdivision ordinance. So they could submit the exact same one and have it come back through the process and see how it goes.
And that's where my concern comes with council. I don't want to see a redundancy happen here. I completely sympathize with the neighborhood and wanting to make sure that they have adequate ability to work with the developer. But I want to make sure that actually happens and that we don't end up with a situation that we simply repeat this process, and then, as Mr. Boson has said in the past, that we're back here again in the exact same situation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chalice. Mr. Hodapp, is that is that correct? Can I, could you come up? I just have a couple of quick for you. Thank you, sir. Can I, could you come up? I just have a couple of quick for you. Thank you, sir.
So while it may not be complete, how soon do you anticipate taking ownership of the land?
Well, it's after the crops are out. So as soon as the crops are out, we plan on moving forward and starting the process. If we get denied on this, everything gets moved back. So I, everybody is complaining about timeframes. Well, this is going to set me back another probably year and a half if we don't hit this deadline.
Okay. Can you explain what that is? Cross route? Is that what you said? Because I'm not a developer, so I don't understand.
It's just the process. So if we...
Crops. Oh, sorry. I was way off. Okay, 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 okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
They're actually farming it this year. They already had rights to do it. So there's a lease on the property. The lease is vacated as of now. So by the time that we take possession of it, we'll be able to move forward and start moving dirt. We want to move fast. Obviously, that's our goals to get this thing done. And work with staff. But the preliminary plat is just one small element to making this thing happen. I have full intentions on moving forward. If this doesn't get approved, it pushes everything back. It pushes all my other projects back. Not saying anything, but council members, I hope you look at that, that the preliminary plat's not going to change. The questions and the things that these people want will be answered and can be handled in the timeframe when the final plat is even done or by the time the construction plans are even developed. So I can work through that process. Like I said, you guys have already approved this preliminary plat, so the nuts and bolts of it are already there. So there's really not anything that's going to change.
So my next question is, how soon could you meet with the Orange Neighborhood Association?
When I schedule to meet, work. I mean, I can meet with them tomorrow or next week or whatever, whatever works. Like I said, I wasn't even aware of the association even.
That there was...
It was one, so. And I apologize that you guys didn't see the plat. I thought all the members up there would have had the plat and seen it was part of the literature that was handed out. But just to reiterate what I said, everything on the plat is staying the way it was approved back in 2020.
Okay. Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, sir.
So I have a question about the time and the length of the preliminary plat. So if you were to start on that, would that be something that you couldn't start on until next fall? Or start on that process? Because I thought, it was my understanding that some of the issues were with the preliminary plat.
I don't believe there were... Well, I guess green space might be one of them, but that can be worked through as it's developed, you know, in the construction plans and the construction documents. Site distance, traffic studies, all that stuff is in the process of happening, but doesn't typically happen at a preliminary plat stage like Noel said. So a lot of this stuff will come together. It just, it's a work in progress. You don't spend the money on all this stuff upfront and on hope that the preliminary plat and the developers are going to come through and buy this thing. So that's why I'm here. I'm buying this piece of ground. I will spend the money on it. I will get everybody the information that they need in it and work with everybody in the process of doing it. So just not approving the preliminary plat doesn't really help us out at all if I'm just going to hand this plat back in the future and say that I worked with the staff or worked with the association on this. Do you see what I'm saying?
I get, I get what you're saying, but there, I think there were challenges with the preliminary plat. That was not the, that was the problem. Would you be willing to work with the, in changing some of the specifications? The more detailed specifications in the preliminary plat?
Absolutely, before we get to the final plat. Yes. And like I said, that's a work in progress. That's what, that's why I'm here. I meet with staff. I work through that. I can meet with the association of Orange County and work through those issues that they have and address them through the city staff. But the preliminary plat really doesn't have much to do with that. I mean, it's a detailed plat that will be tweaked and modified by the time it goes to a final plat, which is the concrete layout of everything.
I just had to answer your questions, Mr. Nichols. Mr. Boson.
Thank you. Can you elaborate a little bit? Because you said if this doesn't, this extension doesn't get approved tonight, it's going to put all your other projects back.
Yeah.
But you're not going to even be taking ownership of this until crops are out.
That's correct.
So can you elaborate on how that six-month timeframe of that you're not even going to take ownership of it is setting all of your other jobs back?
Okay, so what happens is financing. So finance, you've got to get approved. I have to have all the construction drawings, all the documents, everything in place to actually submit to my lender. When I submit those, that information to the lender, that allows me to be released and actually start the process. But it takes time. Like a preliminary plat takes, I'm guessing, a couple of months to get through staff, gets allocated to everybody, gets handed out to all the council members again, and then it starts the whole process over. So now I'm lost three months. It takes me a couple of months to get construction drawings done, and I can't start the construction drawings until I have commitment from you guys that the preliminary plat will actually be approved. So we're talking four months, five months. By that time, my due diligence are up and I can't move forward with a subdivision. So that's what pushes me back is the construction side of it because I have other projects going that I am allocating funds to right now for this year. And if this one gets skipped, then I go to the next project.
Got you. And then you mentioned that the, that the traffic study is in the works.
Yes.
Who's doing the traffic study? You or Buzz?
No, I will be doing this.
So it's not done?
It will be handled through me.
So when you say it's in the works, we just decided who's going to pay for the traffic study?
Correct.
Mr. Greider.
Yeah, I guess, I get that you have the things that you need to get done. I guess I, I'm a little bit confused. And this isn't a question. The folks in this neighborhood are saying that they have problems with this preliminary plat. This council will have to approve anything that comes back before it. So I guess I am, what do I want to use? Disturbed a little bit that we would just turn around and return the same plat that has caused all of this heartburn initially. I get that that's easiest. I, listen, I teach. I know that sometimes the easiest path is the shortest path. But the fact that the neighbors are saying that they are concerned about this preliminary plat and the fact that you are suggesting that we will, that you could just turn around and give us back the same plat, concerns me because the crux of this issue is not whether or not we want housing. We all want housing. We all voted for the 2030 plan. Many of us campaigned on housing. Almost no one that I've talked to in Orange doesn't want housing or acknowledge the reality that there is going to be housing in that area. They recognize that it's a different day. What they want, what I want for my constituents is for them to be heard. And I need that to be very, very clear, which is why I'm voting no on this preliminary plat because the neighbors need to be brought along. I understand that you didn't know. I get that. It happens. But this is the reality that we are working with. And I, and I get that you have to make business decisions, but we have to make decisions that are good for the community. And our, my community is telling me that they are not being brought along on this. And so I think that we need to go back to the beginning and bring everyone along on this process because that has not happened. And that's no one in this room's fault, but it is the reality in which we are living. And so I will continue to be a no on a plat that my constituents does not feel at least incorporates their opinions in a fair way.
Can I address? Can I ask you one question? My question is, can this be handled internally after the, after the preliminary plat is done? Because a lot of these things can be addressed after the plat is done, and I have my guarantee that I can move forward. These plat can be changed. It can be modified before it goes to a final plat. In the construction phase of the documents that will be produced, all these changes can happen.
Mr. Hodap, can I respond, Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I get that, okay? But here's the reality of where I'm, I'm coming from as a council member. This has been before us, three times before this. And we were all told that it was going to happen, that there was going to be communication, that the study was going to be done, that the sightlines were going to be talked to, that the school was going to be brought in, the neighborhood was going to be brought in, and the community was going to be brought in. And that has not happened. And I'm not saying it won't happen, but what I'm saying is we need to start, we just need to blank slate it and start the process again so that we can move beyond the problems of this last one and start a new one that is good for everyone.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson, I have a question for you. Sorry. Typically, again, my, this isn't my area of expertise, but between preliminary plat and final plat, knowing they want to break ground, from what I'm hearing, next spring. If we, like, when would we see the final plat?
Final plat would go to Planning Commission first, which meets in the second Tuesday of the month, and then it would come to council at the next available council meeting. So it would probably be on a first Monday in July.
So we wouldn't see the final...
We're on the June P and Z.
So we would, so we, so we, Mr. Henning, thank you. So we would, we would see the final plats in July, right?
No, no, they're not going to have it ready, but I'm just saying if, just using that example.
That's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
If it took them four months to get the final plat ready, then you're looking at a first Tuesday and then a first Monday.
I'm just trying to get like a, like a minimum, how far we would be away from, from doing that. Okay. Any other council comments, Mr.? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Amos.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protem. One of the things that I'm hearing Councilman Greider say is, is that the citizens have approached him and they are not happy with the plat as a stance. Well, if I remember correctly, that was the initial discussion was, is you were not happy lot size, different things. That was, that was actually happening with it. But then I remember everyone coming back, coming up here, and they weren't, they were not, I guess, happy is not the word, but they were, my understanding was is that everyone was okay with the direction that things were headed. That's what my understanding was at the time. Well, and I'm just saying that I remember that happening, and we decided to go ahead and move forward. And like Councilman Boson says, it was a four to three vote as far as moving it forward. And we knew that there were some issues that needed to be addressed. And you all had met with someone, I don't know if it was Buzz Anderson or who it was, that you met with, and they talked with you. Now we have a different developer who is telling you the exact same thing. He will work with you. He will do the things necessary to make this what you feel that it needs to be. So for me, I just, I cannot agree with my colleague from a standpoint of pushing this back, starting at square one, because he is going to work with you to make it what you feel it should be. So for me, I see no reason to push it back.
I think I look at it a little bit, Mr. Amos, like, like that, that we had, I'll go to the Edison site where we had a change in developer. And with that, you know, the original it was, people didn't like what was there. But through this process, they did that. What I am going to ask, because I, I want to hear, I want both sides. So I'm going to ask that we postpone this vote for two weeks. And within that time, Orange and the developer get together. And it's not going to solve all the problem, but I want that initial conversation to happen, Mr. Greider, to do that, so that way some of those things can take place. But I also think we need to, we need to move because we saw when one developer wasn't working and another developer came in and we listened, we have precedent. So we know those kinds of things can happen. For the Orange Edison, that did happen for them when that was set down, when, when there was a little bit of time between the preliminary and where we're getting at with the final plat. So we know that can happen with the right developer. And we know things haven't happened with the right developer in the past, perhaps. I think we have an eager developer. I think we found people who want to invest. We want to do things. We want to have that kind of stuff. So I'm asking the council to postpone this vote for two weeks. I know, and that doesn't help you. You want to, you got your due diligence. I just want that, I'm asking council to have, that those guys, those groups get together. In two weeks, we come back and we vote on this, so we can do that. So discussion on this. Oh, I need a second. I need a second.
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. Discussion on this.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I was just going to make that motion that you just made because I firmly believe that if we continue to keep pushing things back for these developers, pretty soon we're not going to have any developers. So I second the motion that you made.
Mr. Childs.
I actually agree. I do have a concern. Does this affect this extension at all? Are we able to even postpone this?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I'm not an attorney, but I stayed in a Holiday Inn. Obviously, you can. The council has a power under the subdivision ordinance for the variance. So even if it were to occur after the date, you still have the power to grant that variance as if it happened before.
Okay. Okay. Any other council questions?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Greider.
I will vote to extend it, but I would like to see a full-throated conversation between the Neighborhood Association and the developer to get us on the right track.
Okay. Any further?
Mr. Boson.
And I'd like to see a preliminary plat. Yeah, we don't have it. This was done in 2018. We didn't get it in our packet. All I got is an outline of where the, where the boundaries are. And so I won't even move forward with this unless I see a preliminary plat and it's agreed upon with the developer and the Neighborhood Association.
Okay. Mr. Nichols.
Are the folks, are you guys going to be able to exchange contact information tonight?
Okay. Mr. Henning. Mr. Henning, can you, I'm going to allow you to come to the mic to say that, will you please? So people in the public can hear you. Well, just tell them you're going to be gone. Well, no, don't even, well, I just said it. Orange Neighborhood, you got your neighborhood watch going on.
What's your address again, Mr.?
You don't have to state it. You're good.
I can't. 138 Side Hill Drive, Waterloo Isle.
We'll drive by it.
Couple preliminary type things. Number one, I want to thank Noel and his organization. Back in 2020, because of this communication issue, we did get a memorandum of understanding with the city. And since then, Noel's group has done a great job, even this time. We got an email a week ahead of time, around Tuesday of last week, that says, hey, this is coming up. And there's been several other zoning changes. So we appreciate that and that has helped with that piece of communication. Thanks, Noel, on that. Second thing is, welcome aboard. We'd like to work with you. I don't see why we can't go back to the preliminary plat and just start like a blank sheet like he's talking about. Even the request, it's like, what are you talking about on there? I already pointed out, Noel, with due respect, this document and this document aren't even numbered the same. And they don't say the same thing in every line. And I'm not even sure if you read it very...
And Mr. Henning, I'm going to, I'm going to have to stop you because now we're getting off topic. And so you answered our question, so thank you very much, Mr. Henning. We're going to, we're going to go on to our vote now. Thank you.
For the preliminary plat, Buzz Anderson...
You know what's going to be really good, if you have a conversation with the developer instead of council, right? And with...
And can they restart this whole plat as part of that discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Henning. Mr. Henning, thank you. Thank you.
That's the question. Can the repl be done? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone for two weeks? Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention on item eight, since we've spent all this time on number nine. I want to thank, and you and I are on the Water Works board. But I want to thank the Water Works for coming to an agreement with this property owner for this easement. I think they, the Water Works Board and the property owner worked diligently on this. And, and they finally got this thing done, and I really appreciate the time that the Water Works and their board spent on this. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion, council, on number eight? Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
On eight or nine?
On nine. I have one last question. The preliminary plat can be changed significantly to meet a final plat. Is that true?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, I don't have the subdivision ordinance right in front of me to know the amount of changes, so we'll definitely look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Roll call, vote on eight and eight, right? Just eight since we were postponing nine, so eight.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Wonderful. So, thank you very much for being here and your, your comments. Hopefully with a new developer, new discussion can happen if you want to. It would be great. I know we may not see everybody here at our next council meeting, but if there's a representative that can be here from the Orange Neighborhood Association to kind of fill us on, on theirs, that would be fantastic. So make sure that you exchange information to get that done, and I know Mr. Greider would love to be a part of that conver, I mean, I know he would love to be a part of that conversation. All right. Let's move on to 10, 11, and 12, please.
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving amendment to the development agreement with Bertha Johnson, originally executed January 23, 2017, adding infill policy incentives for the renovation of 1420 Byron Avenue in the amount of $10,000 and zero cents for the completed project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 11, a resolution approving addendum number two to a professional services agreement with Robinson Engineering Company of Independence, Iowa, originally executed March 16, 2020 in an amount not to exceed $6,000 and zero cents in conjunction with the Delane Creek watershed assessment and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 12, a resolution approving professional services agreement with Terracan Consultants, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $16,500 and zero cents in conjunction with the Hawthorne Avenue storm sewer pumping station relief wells and authorizing mayor to execute said document.
All right. We have a motion and a second for resolutions 10, 11, and 12. Any public comments on those? Going a second time, council? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right. Any further public comments? Council? All right. Hearing none. I was, I thought you had your hand. Roll call, please. I thought, I thought you gave me the, the look.
The side eye.
The side eye. Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on 16, 17, 18? Mr. Henning, can you just give us a quick little update on 18, please?
Paul Henning, Leisure Services Director, thanks for the opportunity. I'll be brief, but I'd like to publicly thank the Gaming Association Board for showing some faith in the City of Waterloo and the Leisure Services Commission and giving an award that will make all the difference. Without this, we wouldn't be moving forward. So this is the momentum builder for our project, so I want to thank them for that. We have, I think you're aware, there's another one on the agenda tonight, was on the consent agenda. We continue to ask for funding wherever we can get it, and the, the energy is positive. So we're optimistic. Thank you.
Well, Paul, I just want to thank you, your staff, and those that you've engaged in, in your, the Leisure Services Board members, I think, too, have been fighting very hard to get as much of this taken care of as quickly as possible so we can have some more transformative opportunities for our, our citizens here in Waterloo.
Thank you, and thanks for the council support. We appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions on 16, 17, or 18? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mayor Protim?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Yes, sir.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second. All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. Roll call, please.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Protim?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.